It being a little past seven, we're gonna open up the May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Kingston zoning Board of Appeals. First on the agenda is Perillo Whopping Road Realty.
So, um, a public hearing will be held at the Town Hall, twenty-six Evergreen Street, Room two hundred, and via Zoom to hear the petition of Preolo Whopping Realty to request a comprehensive permit under Mass General Laws, Chapter forty B, to allow construction at one thirteen, I'm sorry, one hundred and thirteen and one hundred and seventeen Whopping Road in Kingston of an age-restricted residential development consisting of sixty units on approximately six hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-three square feet of land, map fifty-two Lot nine and map forty-two Lot eight. The hearing is open already, so I'm just gonna make a motion to continue this until July seventeenth at seven oh five P M.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Seventeenth. So the next one is three?
The next hearing we have is Three Grand View Ave.
Public hearing will be held at the Town Hall, twenty-six Evergreen Street, Room two hundred on Wednesday, September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven P M. Applicant Susan Larson, Three Grand View Ave, map thirty-eight Lot ninety-three must seek a special permit from the zoning Board of Appeals per Section four point two point A, non-conforming structure use or lot subsection four A in order to remove the roof on a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot and build a second floor for living space. This has already been opened. It was continued a couple of times. It was open on October eighteenth. So, is someone here?
I couldn't speak to it.
Okay.
Is this fair? Um, can I, well, I think you have.
Get to use the microphone, sir?
Yeah.
I thought there was a projector here that I could put some visual materials up, or no?
No.
Okay. So, just to recap, we came here a few, quite a few months ago and with our proposal, and I, I think it generally met, was, was viewed positively, and we had yet to go to conservation, so that was one of the stipulations that get approved by conservation and come back to us. Now, at that time, parking was mentioned, and it's the situation there, as in much of Rocky Nook, that people are parking on the street because there's no other options. And so, it, while it was discussed, it wasn't, it didn't come up as, as a roadblock. And in fact, I'm reading from the minutes here, keeping the home as a two-bedroom existing proposed eliminates any increase in parking and therefore there's no relief required. So, we went ahead and went to conservation, and they, although they did approve us, they did not allow us to put four helical piers directly beneath the overhang of the building in order to better support the substandard foundation. Now, that doesn't have anything to do with you folks, but it, it is a hardship in that because they wouldn't let us put four helical piers two feet away from the building, that's probably twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars worth of remediation work that now has to be done from the inside. That would have been a fraction of that. But, you know, that's, I understand that in a way, you know, so that is as it is. So, we came back to zoning. I, I was away and it, it, I think my client was on Zoom, so at that point, the parking came up as basically, well, you know, we can't approve this with the parking as it is. I mean, that's kind of how I read that. So, that's, that's where we come to right now, okay? And we did look into the possibilities of doing some sort of a retaining wall and parking off the street. And I, I think you folks have these pictures that, that show how steep the lot is going down from the road. I mean, it's basically almost a cliff and, and then there's the front door. So, there is the possibility to do a retaining wall, but it's not gonna get us a hundred percent off the street. And while there is a little bit of room on the left side of the lot, there's a little bit more room, that's where the sewage pump is that, that pumps up to the pressurized street main. And I think moving that would be a major, uh, major thing. So, I mean, I, I think that what we're left with is, as long as that house is there, people are gonna be parking on the street. And we could do a retaining wall that would get us further off the street, but it's not gonna get us a hundred percent off the street. And as long as the house is there, it's either gonna be parking completely on the street or partially off the street. So, that's kind of how that plays out. So, I guess the difficult part of that is, if we were to build a retaining structure, we have to go back to conservation. So, that would have been, you know, something that we could have originally applied for and been part of the package. And in order to go back to conservation now, that's a whole nother site plan and representation and whatnot. How many thousands of dollars? So, um, I don't know where that leaves us, to tell you the truth. I mean, I, I would like to think that, you know, I've encountered many zoning problems over the years where, well, if you improve the situation, if that's the best you can do, then at least you're, you're doing something. So, I guess that's probably, what I would propose is that we are willing to go back to conservation with a plan to do a retaining wall to get us further off the street. But I think that we would have to have some reasonable assurance that that would meet with zoning board approval, because if it didn't, you know, we wouldn't wanna go through another added expense of going to conservation and getting approval for that. So, that, that's where we are right now.
Very good. Anyone else have any comments?
The fire department. You mentioned the fire department.
Yeah, the fire department said that they had no problem with the parking the way it was. And I think, you know, the, the, the Department of Highways, well, maybe that was a different, different story. But, um, so, you know, I mean, I'm sure that this comes up. You know, all kinds of people have done second stories and are parking on the street, and I realize that sometimes there, there is a line drawn in the sand and all that. I've been through that many times in many places. But, like I say, I'd like to think that if we go the extra mile, that, that would be met favorably by the board.
Very good. Since there's no one else out in the audience, does anything to say? Marshall?
Oh, um, okay. What bylaw are you trying to meet regarding parking? Like, how many off-street parking spaces are you thinking?
I think they would be looking for two off-street parking spaces.
Two?
Yeah. We can't even get one.
Oh, you can't even get one?
No.
And even if you went to, back to conservation and got their permission, which have already been there once?
Yeah.
And they did not raise parking as an issue, correct?
No, it was, didn't come up.
So, you go back there again, and will you get, will you get three-quarters of a parking space? How, how big?
Well, that remains to be seen.
If two's the, if two's the goal?
Yeah. What fraction are we talking about? I mean, that, that's an engineering thing. And we, we do have, we have spoken to Rick Grady about it, and, and he kind of briefed us on, you know, what was required on his end in order to engineer a solution or a partial solution and then to represent us in conservation, and that's as far as we got.
And you've owned the property since nineteen?
Two thousand fifteen.
Two thousand fifteen.
Like it was built in two thousand?
You have to go to the microphone.
Okay, I, I'm gonna direct my.
Yeah, I think what she's saying is that it was built in nineteen seventy-four and rebuilt after a fire in the early nineties in that.
No, no, no.
Okay.
I think, I really don't know. I've tried to find the records. I think it was a summer cottage back in the fifties when my next-door neighbor used to summer in Rocky Nook. That cottage burnt down in a fire, and the owner, I don't know if it was the same owners. I think it, according to my next-door neighbor, uh, they rebuilt it in nineteen seventy-five. So, from nineteen seventy-five until today, they've been parking in the street.
And you purchased it in two thousand?
Two thousand fifteen. So, there were only two other, the people that rebuilt it in two, in nineteen seventy-five lived there till two thousand. My, the person I bought it from lived there till, from two thousand till I bought it in two thousand fifteen.
And you've already made adjustments in your original plans to accommodate the feedback of the zoning enforcement officer, Jason Silva. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, our original plans, yes, because with, after our discussion with Jason, FEMA didn't allow us to build a hundred percent.
Well, fifty percent, which would be using, you know, doubling the footprint.
So, we made it smaller. So, most of the upstairs is going to remain attic, which is what it is now. And then, we're just putting a bathroom and a bedroom and taking one of the bedrooms downstairs for my sewing room and a deck, my office. And I do a lot of sewing. I've got, I've got, my dining room table is like, I mean, it's only eight hundred and eighty square feet. It's a tiny little house. I just need a little bit more room.
And when it's, if it's approved and the second story is added, how many square feet of interior living space will your house then be?
About twelve or thirteen hundred.
So, it won't be a doubling in size? It'll just be like a one and three-quarters?
Right.
One and a third of your.
One and a third.
Yeah.
I don't have any more questions. Thank you. And my final question is, it's really not that relevant, but why did you get the impression that, that it wouldn't be approved without parking?
We asked.
Asked who?
The last zoning, that first meeting we came to in October, I left here. We discussed parking quite a bit and said, since we are not increasing bedrooms, then as long as we're not adding a bedroom, I got the impression from the board, and it says in the minutes that no relief was required as if we're not increasing bedrooms. I was under the impression that as long as we got conservation approval, you were gonna approve it.
Well, I, I, I remember that I asked verbally for a sense of the board and that that was met positively.
But that didn't happen at the April third Zoom meeting. Sort of took me by surprise. So, here we are again.
Okay, my final question is, if the board concludes by whatever vote is required to, to act on this application, that parking is required, you've indicated that you would be willing to go back to conservation and try to do your very best to meet the parking requirements. Is they currently exist under the, the two thousand nineteen regulations? Is that, is that, is that fair?
I don't think that they could be met a hundred percent.
I know, but you're willing to do your very best. Let me ask you this question. If the board, like, says, you, you gotta come up with the, the required amount of parking spaces, and I don't think it's two, by the way. I think it's one and a half. So, if that helps, would you be willing to apply for a variance just to put it to bed? Say, look, they say this, this, this parking law applies to me. I don't think it does, but I can't put on my second story unless I get parking. Would you be willing to ask for a variance in addition to your asking for a special permit?
Well, um, I, I guess you, you would have to give me a little bit of advice, because, I mean, I have been at zoning hearings in probably twenty or twenty-five different towns, and the vast majority of those, like, don't even ask for a variance. And so, um, yeah, I mean, how difficult is that? I guess I would have to ask you.
It's just a question of notice, legal notice to your neighbors so that if your structure starts being erected, that suddenly Jason isn't inundated with phone calls from people that say, what the heck?
My neighbors are so supportive of me. They're, they're all in favor of it. They've all gone up the second story. That is not a problem, but I don't know what that means.
Well, it, it, I, I think that our situation probably does meet the hardship test of a variance, but what, what I'm a little apprehensive about is, like, with the issue with the piers, it wasn't what we are, were doing in our specific thing. They, I, I feel that they didn't want to make a precedent of, you know, because there is marsh right up to the house. Okay, well, we're putting piers in the marsh now. So, yeah, I mean, you know, maybe it'd be similar with the parking because there's so much of, of the on-street parking that happens in Rocky Nook. Maybe they were just saying, well, you know, you don't wanna set a precedent. I don't know, you know, and then there, there's another six, seven thousand dollars, you know?
Thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Um, did you get a response to your May eighth letter to the, to Mr. Baz, Basler, Baz, Bazler? I don't know how to pronounce his name.
No, he's on vacation. I went in to speak with him because I read his letter. So, I thought, it sounded like he was a little bit misinformed that it was going from a summer cottage to a year-round home. So, I went in to talk to him, and he's on vacation for a week and a half, which was gonna bring him back after this hearing. So, I left a letter in his office and gave you a copy. But that's just my response to some of the things that he said in his letter.
Yeah, but it, it is gonna be year-round, because you, you say in your letter you're gonna make occasional trips in the winter. So, sometimes you'll be there. So, his letter.
Most of the time I'll be there.
You're asking for a special permit that's gonna affect your neighbors, though, because he's saying that he will not sand or plow that street anymore if we approve this.
Exactly. That's why I wanted to talk to him. My neighbors park in the street, too. My neighbors love me.
But may.
And they, they're, they're gonna be very upset with this. That's why I would like to speak to Mr. Bazler. I mean, if the fire department has no problem getting down there, we have, we have garbage trucks, landscape trucks, fire trucks. Everybody goes down that road. If they stop plowing it.
Well, if, I, I would have to say, I mean, if we do nothing and we say, well, this is all just too much, then is he gonna stop plowing the street then? Because it's gonna be the same situation now as it is if we do the project.
So, that's not what he indicated. He said that if we approve this project, just this project, then, I mean, you have a copy of the letter. He said that he's not gonna sand or plow the street. I, I mean, under the standards of a special permit, I, I personally would not approve this. I, I feel bad, and I don't want to reject something like this. But if he's not gonna plow or sand the street, I mean, you guys are gonna have to hire. The, do the neighbors know that they're gonna have to hire a private company to come down there from now on? The town isn't going to do that for you.
Well, I would ask.
Before we condition the denial of a permit on this letter from the highway superintendent?
I'm not conditioning it. I'm just asking questions.
But you're, you're saying you may deny it because of a letter that really represents hearsay. It's often the truth of the matter asserted. Quite frankly, I don't think this man has the ability, the, the, the right to, to decide on his own and threaten the zoning board. If you exercise your discretionary authority to grant a special permit, we are, I, I refuse to plow and sand these roads. I mean, that is an outrage, in my opinion, and I don't think we should give that letter any consideration whatsoever. That's my opinion.
I'm giving it consideration.
Well, I don't think you should.
So, I, okay, I mean, we're not in a court. It's not, there's no hearsay. There's no evidentiary.
I just wanna be open and honest about the, the, where the board stands.
I, I understand.
May you please continue?
Yeah, you had a chance to question them. I'm trying to get some answers here. I.
I will tell you.
That's why I asked if you had heard back from him.
No, because he's on vacation.
So, my next suggestion to you is maybe to continue this so that we can talk with him to see if he is going to decide not to do this. If he's gonna decide to not plow that street.
Then the people on Delano Ave and the people on Cedar Street, they're going to be furious because if he doesn't plow our road, the plow can't turn around and go up those two. My road is the turnaround. It's like a circle. He, I think he's just misinformed. I'm not quite sure how he got misinformed, but.
I think there would be a lot of implications all over Rocky Nook to start, you know, doing that sort of thing, and it would be definitely good to speak with him again.
It would be implications only if someone was going to do more construction.
Well, that's happening everywhere.
Under our code, if you're going to decide to do more construction, then you have to follow the code. And if not, then you come here and ask for a special permit. And our board is tasked with interpreting the code and seeing whether a special permit is something that we should grant to you. And if it's affecting the neighbors negatively, that's one of the prongs that we have to consider under the code, that we shouldn't give you a special permit if it's negatively affecting the neighborhood. So, I don't know what his rationale is. I don't know why he's saying that. I, right now, if you don't continue it, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm not in favor.
Well, we'll continue.
But you don't need my vote. I mean, you have.
I want to tell you the truth.
I don't know how you guys are feeling.
I wanna give up the whole thing to tell you the truth. All right, I won't give up. Just as we're.
Kevin, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Would you like to chime in?
Yes, I would. Kevin Roddington. I'm on Zoom tonight. This is an unfortunate situation. The house is existing there. It, there is not a lot of room there. But the problem is that they are going before the board to build an addition onto the house, which creates more of an impact. And we're not also, whether it's a one-bedroom or could be three there, it, there's, they need some kind of parking space there. Even if it was for a small car or something like that. I went back through my notes, and we told them that it had to be, you need a parking space for every bedroom. And so, it's, it's a change of the usage of the property to a point, because they're putting an addition on it. And, and it's, if you grant it, if we grant it to them, everybody in the, in Rocky Nook is gonna park on the road, so you have to give it to everybody else. But the bylaw states that they need one parking space for every bedroom. So, she has a, she, she's not parking there now, but, but I realized that she wants to put an addition on it. And that creates, could be, you know, she did mention earlier that it was gonna be three bedrooms, but now it's a sewing room. I went back through the notes that we've been going from last year of this. So, I, I.
Well, I, I don't, I don't want any discussion going forward of three bedrooms, because I, I already told the building inspector, we, we will do anything that is required in order to meet the two-bedroom, uh, bedroom count, e- even if we're taking down a wall. And he said that wasn't required. So, so, yeah, I mean, let's, let's not talk about there's three bedrooms. There isn't gonna be three bedrooms.
Well, if you went to the original plan, that's what the original plan was when this all started. That's where I came up with the three bed.
I understand. That, that's been amended.
Okay, all right. It's just that, you, you, we, we asked at the last meeting that you come up with an engineer, some kind of plan, and that's what we were hoping to see tonight was a plan.
Well, yeah, you know, that's what should have happened at the first meeting, so we could have included that in our conservation. You know, we feel blindsided by, by the fact that, that, that really, it didn't come up as a roadblock. It just came up as a concern. And so, you know, that puts us in the position of, you know, having to go back to conservation. And like I say, well, maybe we'll be willing to do that, but I could tell you there's not gonna be two cars parked off the street ever at that location.
I, I understand that, but it'd be an attempt to at least have some sort of parking off-street.
Yeah, some sort is a possibility. I wouldn't call it off the street. I would call it more off the street.
That's all I have for right now.
Thank you.
Personally, I, I would love to grant the permit. I really would. Um, I, I, as a Rocky Nook resident, and.
I am too, by the way.
And my brother is your neighbor, and I know that, and I grew up in the house where my brother's house is during the summer. So, I know all the history of that house, truthfully. But the law did change in ninety-six, I believe it was, or whatever year it was, where you had to have a off-street parking for bedrooms. There are other factors involved with, you know, the superintendent of streets. He's chimed in on it. Fire department doesn't, doesn't have a problem with it. But there seems to be a little bit of debate on what, what could happen. I think that if you go and get an engineering design with an existing site plan with some dimensions, where the property is, where the street is, and a new plan with dimensions showing the property line and how much parking you could get out of it realistically, whether it be a modular wall or a concrete wall, that would be cost-effective. I think your questions would be answered. I, I get that it's additional money. Went through the, I live on Adams Ave right around the corner. Went through the same thing, you know, with this board and with conservation. I, I get it.
So.
But I just, I, I just feel, I feel bad, but I, it just, it's what the bylaw says now. And the only thing that could be a problem is, five years from now, you do sell the house, and there is no additional parking, and a family moves in with four cars. That, that's where we have to kind of look at the big picture, other than just the small picture of you. And I, again, we're trying to help the town. We're trying to help you. I, I get it. I really would love to have you just approve it. The dominos just don't line up to do that without, I think, the proper engineering drawing. I, and I, I would advise a continuation.
Thank you.
I understand what you're saying, and that kind of reiterates what, what I said earlier, is that, you know, we'd be willing to go the extra mile if, if we thought that it would, you know, I guess, you know, meet with approval. You know, and a lot of these zoning things, it's, it's the art of the possible. It's like. You know, and a lot of these zoning things, it's, it's the art of the possible. It's like, you know, when bad things happen, the good situations, it's when nobody will, you know, kind of bend to the greater good and just hold to the letter of zoning. I mean, that happens everywhere, all the time. And I-
I, I agree, but if we say, yeah, we approve, we'll let you, if you come back with a drawing, and the drawing still doesn't meet the requirements of the parking situation, then you're gonna say, well, you agreed to it, but it still doesn't meet the law. So, I, without the proper information, we can't give you the proper answer. I'm sorry. It's pretty cut and dry to me.
Thank you.
Well, it's, it's not quite that cut and dried because I can say-
It's extremely cut and dried. The first question we ask anybody that comes before us from Rocky Nook is what do you have for parking? And I don't know how that was misunderstood. Blindsided. I was blindsided at the last meeting to find out there was no parking and parking on the street.
Well, that was, that was discussed in the first meeting.
I don't recall that being discussed that way.
Well, it's in the minutes.
Well, I thought we had plenty of parking.
Okay.
It's unfortunate, but that's the first question everybody is asked that comes before us to do anything on Rocky Nook.
I think this board feels for you, but your situation is the fact that the, the special permit runs with the property. It doesn't just exist for you.
Right.
So, when you sell it, the next person that gets it doesn't have parking, and you're affecting the neighbors around you, and you're affecting the next owner of that house. And so, we have to look at the bylaws that were voted on by this town again and interpret it the way that we feel that, that the town will benefit, not just one property owner. I would love to give this to you, but I, I don't, I don't see it in the bylaws that it's, that, that I can do that.
Can we ask Jason a question on the bylaws?
Yeah.
I, I just wanna reiterate, I think you hit the home run with the bylaw goes with the property, not necessarily you. And I think that's, that to me is the crux, the crux of what the bylaw is all about, the property.
Jane, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Jason.
That's okay.
And you can always defer and say, I wanna think about it, whatever. Are bylaws regarding parking that so many of the board members have, have spoken to? Do, um, do, do they apply to pre-existing, non-conforming structures that come before the board for a special permit? If the change that they proposed to their structure, they proposed to add around four hundred and fifty square feet to their single-story, single-family home. If that, it, extension, that structural extension, if that change is not a substantial structural extension to a substantially greater extent, do our parking regulations apply to that?
So, to answer the first question, parking requirements in our bylaw today do not apply to pre-existing, non-conforming structures and uses that were in existence at the time before the bylaw. And, um, we would never apply parking requirements from today if stuff like a business or a home had been in existence prior to those zoning requirements. In the case of triggering new parking requirements, when an application comes in universally, parking requirements in our bylaw are referenced based on, um, on a use table, a parking table. And in the case of residential, um, the only equation, excuse me, is based on parking spaces, based on bedrooms. So, what it calls out for in a residential application is one-point-five spaces per dwelling unit with two bedrooms or fewer, uh, two spaces per dwelling unit with three bedrooms or more. And then all spaces are located, uh, to be located within three hundred feet of the dwelling. So, that, that's all I have. So, when the application first came to me, it did have, um, some additional bedrooms based on the current layout. I think it was two to a proposed three, which triggered an additional parking space. We talked about the relief required. And in my opinion, in this case, because, um, the parking was being increased in non-conformity, it would be potentially a variance request, as an example. So, in, in addition to that, the project was so large that it did trigger some FEMA regulations that made the project, in my opinion, a bit impractical because of all the constrictions with conservation and things like that. So, the project did get ran back, which included not, uh, not triggering FEMA regulations for a demo rebuild. In addition, not triggering the parking requirement based on the bylaw. So, in my opinion, the board's, uh, decision is, is that, uh, certainly can make an opinion that more parking is going to be needed from the addition, but that there's no specific relief from a bylaw that's gonna be, needed to be required aside from the current special permit.
So, under our bylaws, the property would be eligible for a special permit with the current parking?
In my opinion, the board has the discretion to either grant this or not based on special permit language. In the essence, is this substantially more detrimental than the existing? And merely that, and if, as an example, if the board member or board members decide that, the addition is inherently gonna require more intensity to the neighborhood, there's a series of requirements that the board, findings the board should look at. It includes, is the traffic patterns, is the neighborhood gonna be negatively affected in general from the addition of this or the change that's going on? So, um, it doesn't have to be specific to parking. It could be just traffic in general. The addition's gonna have more traffic trips to the site and therefore is substantially more detrimental, or not. Therefore, the addition's de minimis and, and is not gonna require any of that. So, um, I think the parking's a detail, um, not necessarily the deciding factor.
Thanks, Jason.
You're welcome.
Before we go any further, what would you like to do? Do you wanna continue this?
Well, yeah, I think we, we need to continue it just even to decide whether we're gonna continue with the process or, or not. I mean, we have our options, like you mentioned.
You probably have to go to the microphone.
Yeah.
So, are you, I, I, you're continuing?
Yeah, yes.
We're, we're asking to continue.
Go ahead.
To what? I'll, I'll make a motion to continue to what date, Debbie?
We have two forty B's on June fifth.
They may need more time.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, what, what was that date?
Um, the June fifth, but we have thirty-three Clutchman and Mayan Postcorne.
Yeah, the, yeah, the one after that, whatever it is, would be better.
July seventeen, we have India Park Country Club and Walking Road.
So, I'll make a motion to continue to July seventeenth at seven-ten P M.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi, Kevin Reddington.
Very good. Next on the agenda is One Landing Road. Would you read that?
Yes. Public hearing will be held at Town Hall, twenty-six Evergreen Street, Room two-hundred on Wednesday. May fifteenth at seven-ten P M. Applicant Doug Rada, One Landing Road, must seek a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals in order to expand a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot by adding an eighteen-by-twenty-two addition and approximately fourteen-by-ten deck, nine feet from the sideline and ten feet from the rear line. I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
I second. I, very good.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, hi. I, I am Dick Rockwood. I did the architectural work for Doug and Kathy Rada for this project. Kathy's husband Doug is, cannot make it upstairs, and he's been couch surfing for months. So, they need a bedroom on the first floor of this house and a bathroom that works for him. And, uh, and that's what we are proposing here. I might add that we have plenty of parking in front of our building.
Thank you.
At the garage. And, uh, uh, there's a garage to the side. There's plenty of room on the lot. And we're doing an extension of a non-conforming, we're nine-point-two feet away from the lot now, and we're staying that same distance on the side. It's a one-story addition. Uh, there's actually a deck in that spot right now, and then we're gonna move the, probably reuse the deck and move it over. We do have a conservation hearing coming up in the next two weeks or so. I don't have the exact date. We are, if you're familiar with this lot or not, it, uh, it goes out and then it's a straight drop, as you can see on the site plan. And I don't know if you have the site plans in front of you.
We do.
Yeah, it's quite a drop down to, down to the river there. And, uh, and so, we, uh, we have that hearing coming up, but I don't, this, this is all lawn and grass right up to the fence in this, so there's nothing that should be a conservation issue. So, um, I don't know if you have any other questions. Uh, I have the architectural plans there. As I said, it's a one-story addition. Uh, which includes a bathroom.
Anybody in the audience have anything to add? If you do, go to the mic, but. Then, Kevin, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I, um, I looked at the plan and, uh, I saw the site plan. We reviewed it. It's kinda like they're gonna follow the same, uh, property line edge as, as the, uh, the house is now.
Very good. Marsha?
Oh, I, I don't have any comments.
Lane?
I don't have any comments. I, I do wanna just say for our record that I do appreciate the, um, town planners' reports on these. They're very helpful.
Very helpful.
Yeah.
Close a long way.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Very good. I'm very, I'm good also. Uh, do we have a motion to?
Is anybody here from the public, though?
No.
Sorry.
No, I appreciate your help.
I just wanted to make sure.
With that being the case, could we get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve, um, was it Landing Road?
Yeah.
One Landing Road?
Exactly.
I make a motion to approve One Landing Road.
For, approve a special permit for One Landing Road?
Yeah.
I second it.
All in favor?
Can we just, can we change the motion subject to Conservation Commission approval? Do we need to do that, or?
If you want.
I guess if they deny it, then they can't do any.
Yeah, right, obviously.
All right, so we'll leave the motion as it is.
Very good.
Yeah, I, I think if they deny it.
Just thinking a little.
Another choice.
Sorry, all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi, Kevin Reddington.
Great. Thank you very much.
Good luck. You got some entertainment, at least.
You're supposed to vote that it shall not be fifteen, so I guess.
That's in the final.
Don't speak mean of us at dinner tomorrow, you, please.
Next up is.
You need to close the hearing.
Oh, make, make a motion to close. The hearing.
I don't think we do.
No, we don't have to close each one.
Yeah.
No.
No.
Cause he reads the note.
We close at the very end.
Yep.
We close it by voting or continuing.
Next up is one sixty Summer Street.
Public hearing will be held at Town Hall, twenty-six Evergreen Street, Room two-hundred on Wednesday, February seventh, twenty-twenty-four. Applicant Summer Hill Limited Partnership, located at one sixty Summer Street, must seek a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals per Section ten-point-four-point-B, power subsections number three of the Kingston zoning bylaw in order to install signage in excess of the allowances for size and numbers of signs as described in zoning bylaw, section nine-point-four-point-D. This is already open, so we'll hear from you.
My name's Julio Lataia with DAI Property Management, and I am the project manager and the property manager for Summer Hill Plaza. And, uh, a little while's back, we did take a permit out to, uh, to the, uh, smaller pylon sign and also to rehab the existing pylon sign to Amerisign was the company that did it. And we did pull a permit for that, and right now, uh, looking through the town, I guess the, the permit wasn't found. But we did come up with some documents in, uh, in our office where we paid for the sign. And also, there was a three-hundred-and-eighty dollars that was paid to the town for that permit. And there was some, uh, signage approval that also that we came to the town. And basically, all we wanna do is add a little bit to that sign because, you know, the, the big box tenant, as we know it, the five-to-ten-thousand-square-foot tenants, they're not there anymore. So, what we've been doing with the plaza, we've been putting smaller tenants in. And as long as I've been here, I've worked with Paul and I've also worked with Jason, and we've always pulled our permit, and we always done the right thing here. So, there's currently, looking at the sign, there's two, two shrubs that are there now. And our idea was to take those shrubs out and just add a panel there because we're in the process of, uh, gonna subdivide it again, and we need, uh, you know, relief on that signage. And that's all we're, we're trying to do. We're not doing anything beyond that.
Kevin, do you have anything?
Uh, yeah, so, do I understand this right, that pylon one and two are gonna stay there?
That is correct. We, we, we're not moving any signs, any pylons or nothing. We're at the bottom of the, uh, big pylon sign that we have there. We just wanna add a panel in there to add a couple more tenants' names on it. So, we're not, uh, we're not doing anything to change the structure of that or anything like that.
Is, and, well, you are adding to the sign for some more spots for, for pylon one?
Pardon me? Yes.
On one, you're gonna increase the size?
Yes.
Yeah. But not two?
No, not two. It's just that, the, the one pylon there.
Okay, 'cause I was understanding that there was no, originally for, for pylon two, there was no permit given prior to, that was discussed at last meeting.
Yes, a- and Kevin, to that, we did pull a permit on that. I know the town can't find it, but we have stuff in our office, including that. A check number ten-nine-three-two from Rockland Trust was paid to the town of Kingston for three-hundred-and-eighty dollars for that permit from Amerisign. Paul Armstrong's not confirmed? Okay. Thanks, Jason.
Wait, what did you say?
So, the, the question, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the question came up that, um, one pylon sign and there's a second pylon sign. Question came up as to whether the second smaller pylon sign was permitted or not. We couldn't locate a permit. Uh, in the, um, we do have, Paul Armstrong works for us part-time. He was out at that time. He came back. He discussed why he permitted the second pylon sign. There happens to be a little side street, kinda unused side street that goes along the shopping plaza. If you enter the plaza, it actually is a side street named Street. Under the bylaw, they're allowed two pylon signs on a corner, and that's why he gave them a permit for the second pylon sign.
But we can't find the permit.
That's correct.
Why can't we find it? Do you know?
But there is a, I checked there.
So, they-
Well, according to Marsha, it's hearsay.
Well, it is. Let's come be honest, Lane. God. To be clear, they have permits for both signs.
I don't know that I, there's no permit for the other one.
It's, uh, as the building and zoning official, it's the, the best- It's, as the building and zoning official, it's to the best of my knowledge that both of both of the pylon signs were permitted by a building official prior to me.
Kevin, are you finished?
I'm here, yes. It 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 is commercial, you know, and and I get it, so if if Paul Armstrong said he permitted it, then he permitted it, but nobody can find the records of it. But um they're asking to increase the size of pylon one and also to satisfy the tenants in there.
Well, Marcia?
You're thinking, what, a variance?
Yes.
Yes.
And what, what are the special conditions associated with your property that would warrant? Other than it makes your tenants happier?
Well, it's just that, like I said, we, you know, we we have a space currently there that's there now and that we we're going to have planned to subdivide it. And one of the things that, you know, a tenant wants their name on the pylon sign. And right now, we if we, you know, we add this this bottom piece here, then we can add, you know, the tenant signs that when we put the new tenants in.
Any other unique conditions?
Pardon me?
Any other unique conditions of the property?
That would be that we, you know, basically because because of the smaller tenants that that we're getting now, you know, where we had the liquor store, we had, you know, Blockbuster over there and stuff like that, they're not there anymore. So now we get these tenants that are twenty-five hundred square foot tenants. And as you know, we've been filling that plaza at a good rate. So I know it's going to come down to a point where we're going to need that in order to, you know, put the tenant sign as we put them in.
I don't have any more questions.
I think what Marcia is correctly saying is that you have to kind of give us some more information to allow a variance as a board. So what are the unique conditions to your land? You know, like I don't, I don't know what the hardship would be. I don't know the answers to these questions in order to grant a variance. You know, there's other things that I can see on here, you can decrease the amount of space on the stop and shop part of the sign to move to create more space on there. I I I don't know, that's just my opinion here. Do you have any other explanation as to why you're?
Oh, that that would be the the only thing that we, like I said, is that, you know, if we had a just a a single tenant coming in, taking that whole space, then I could work with, but we're we're going, I know that we're going to have to stop, subdivide the spaces because you're not getting those big box tenants anymore. So that would be the the only thing that I I can tell you that that's the reason why we we need it.
That, do you, are you done, Kevin? I think you were talking.
I just.
Oh, and Lane, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to follow up on the hardship. Do your tenants pay to put their name on these pylons?
No, basically, we 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 do it as the tenant comes in and stuff like that. And also they they have ability to put up the building sign on on the property itself.
But it's your sign, so.
It's our sign.
And are you saying that you could just make Stop and Shop smaller if if another tenant came in?
Then then we would have to do the same thing, that we would have to get a permit and then Stop and Shop is to the least, the the square footage on the sign is that has to stay put. It's everything else that comes underneath.
Oh, it's in Stop and Shop's lease?
That is correct.
But it's everybody else.
They have, yeah, they have the square footage that they have. And I I would have to go and and get them to decrease, you know, that's, then I could allow us to do that.
Again, I'm following up on what Lane said and I just, I I need to hear more reasons to give you a var- a variances.
The hardship has to also do with the topography of the shape. I mean, that's, there's no topograph, you haven't elicited any issue with the land.
Oh, I don't have, I don't have any, other than I I don't have room when I put the tenants in there. I don't have room, room on my on my side to put the tenant's name on it.
Yeah.
And any tenant, as you know, any tenant that that's going to be in the plaza, one of the things is is to have their name on the pylon sign and stuff like that. A it acts like a directory of of who's there and so on down the line. So if I if I went and put another tenant in there, I can't put their name in the directory there, it's.
But this is like the parking issue that we had with the first applicant. Like, I want to give this to you, but the town has voted this as a standard in our bylaws. And I'm I'm here interpreting the bylaws. I I I don't know, I'm I'm just, I'm at a loss as to how we could even dra- draft a decision on this with a variance.
Well, bas- basically, you know, we're we're just asking for the relief for because of our tenants coming in and stuff like that. And I it's, I don't think it's it's really going to affect an anybody or anything else down the line. Similar to what what you're saying, like the parking, I perfectly understand that. But this, you know, putting putting out, you know, a a sign like that underneath an existing sign, I don't think that's really going to affect anybody else down the line that that's going to come up. And I'm pretty sure somewhere else, somebody else in the plazas, I don't know how they're dividing down the street and the other two plazas and stuff like that. But I'm sure that somewhere down the line, I know they put a new sign up and stuff like that down down the road and stuff. So we're really not asking for a whole lot. We've been, you know, a good cust- a good tenants here in town and stuff. And like I said, we 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 always get get our permits, we're always doing the right thing, we keep the plaza nice. We got some decent tenants in there and as the tenants come in, it's revenue for the town as well. So we're just asking for a little bit of relief on 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 the signage over there. And I think if, once we put it up over there, I don't think anybody's really going to be noticing it other than when we put a tenant, oh, there's a new tenant in there and stuff like that, so. I, you know, I know you guys got to make a decision and stuff like that, but that would be our condition why we're doing it. It's exactly what I explained in why we're doing it.
Jason, could I ask you a question? Is this, are these signs pre-existing non-conforming structures?
No, these are permitted signs.
They're permitted.
Both two pylon signs were permitted by Paul Armstrong. Yeah, and I believe, I believe again, you know.
So how would we treat it?
Sometimes things get misfiled, things have changed throughout the years, we've used several different permitting systems. So I feel confident that those were, we discussed last time, there was a Bee's Ice Cream that was not permitted. The Plaza for Lease or something, there was a big four by eight, that was not, but I think I think they removed some of those.
They did.
Last, yeah, last time, so, you know, there was, you know, part of the understanding of sending them to this board was as you rec- board recognizes, the site had a little too much intensity as it relates to signage. So I believe, I understand that the variance is part of the the technical request. But, you know, is the signage in keeping with what you'd like to see at a plaza like this? Because it's, you know, like anything, they're all fighting for signage. They all put out flyers, banners, everyone's looking for attention.
I know, this doesn't seem to fit very well into the category of a variance a sign means.
That is part, and I don't mean to fault the app, excuse me, the applicant for this, but it is it is our only mechanism to send somebody for relief on signage. We don't have a special permit for signage, we don't have any other mechanism. The only thing I can do, even if a sign is one square foot out of out of compliance, I have to send them here. Great examples are some of the industrial park, Amazon, the car dealers. All of those have very large bulk and size buildings. And when you lay on the size requirements from the sign by law, you could stand at the bottom of the building and still not be able to read the sign, it's so small. So the problem with our 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 sign by law is it doesn't scale things up as it relates to larger plazas and things like that. So again, the variance is only because it's the only mechanism. We have issued variance approvals on signage in the past, but the determination is still in front of the board as to whether it meets that standard, there's no question, that's the that's the request.
Right, the standard just seems to have no application, or a lot of it, in terms of focus on the topography of the land and the unique conditions and features.
I don't disagree that it is a bit of a a reach to find.
On a sign.
Three test work, so.
Thanks, Jason.
I'm trying to look at this and trying to determine, I mean, I see the word proposal, but it's from the sign manufacturer. I mean, if what we've received, I'm not comparing, but what we received from the last tenant pro- request was proper paperwork showing the different departments and on how they felt and what the existing conditions are. So on a proposal like this, I I'd like to see what the existing standards are. I mean, I'm not a sign guy, I don't know the sign off the top, even though I'm on the board here, I don't know the sign standards and the laws. I'd like to see a proposal that showed me that. What is the size of the existing sign? What is the size of the new sign? And does it conform to step number one, the standards? I think that if we just approve it, we're going to open up a can of worms for every business in town to want to start putting up bigger signs.
Can I show you what I proposed last time?
I I I see it, but I don't, I don't understand it, I'm sorry.
Can I explain it to you?
I I'd have to look at it, you can try to explain it, but I'd need to look at it and try to analyze and make sure I see it.
So as far as every town that I've gone to to get a permit for signs, a sign has to be set back so many feet from the road because it would be blocking.
I don't care about any of the towns, this town.
So we are just looking to add ninety-six inches by twenty-six inches, a box down the bottom before new tenants that could potentially come in because he is subdividing some of his space that he has. Now, if this isn't allowed, he literally since Stop and Shop has their own square footage that they're required, would have to redo this whole pylon. All the tenants in here would be really have to be a lot smaller and you're not going to be able to see them as you're coming in. We, he'd have to redo this whole pylon in order to fit what is required for the town. So, I mean, I understand that you don't have tenants that you are seeing here right now, but when a new tenant comes in or goes to any building, they have their own logo, they have their own thing that they would like to put on here. It's not like it's going to be crazy, I'm sure he wouldn't allow that. And having to redo the whole pylon would be an astronomical amount of money. And you're really not going to be able to see any of the tenants if you have to do that because you're minimizing them by a law.
Have you divided the space yet?
Pardon me?
Have you divided the space yet?
No, not yet.
So this is just?
We're preparing to to do that because right now, we're not getting the, we're not getting the the big tenant. We've been, this box now has been empty since twelve, thirteen years. It's gone by since Blockbuster left there. And we managed to take a little bit of it and add, you know, a chunk of it, a little bit and put there. But I still have fifty-five hundred square feet. And right now, I'm not getting the fifty-five hundred square foot tenant by a long shot. So now it's the smaller tenants that are coming in and the use anywhere from fifteen, seventeen hundred to twenty, twenty-five hundred square feet. Those are the type of tenants that I think all all of the plazas were getting. You know, we we have our main tenants that that are there, thank God, we still, you know, have Stop and Shop and things like that. But the days of having bi- bigger tenants, it's not, it's not there anymore, so.
Didn't you add on Western Grill, that whole block?
That's a freestanding building. West, Western Grill is is a freestanding building.
What else is in there with that?
We we have Nick Kells in there, we have the Lash Lady, we have Orange Dairy, we have Sullivan Driving School. But we have Red Crosses in there.
Blueberry Muffin?
Blueberry Muffin.
Wasn't Western Grill added after?
No, Western Grill was basically, that was the old treatment plant that we took down and we put a freestanding building over there.
My original question is, per the permit that we have for that sign, are there requirements of the size of it? Wha- what does the original permit say for that sign? Does it say the sign has to be X amount of feet by X amount of feet?
I think, I think the the original, the original pylon.
So just what is, what does the permit say that you have that's approved, that is, that's, that that sign? What what is the size of that sign that's approved?
That's that's a small one. It's the same sign that's here.
And I and I don't know, quite frankly, I just don't know what the law is of size of signs. I don't know what the what the ratio is, if you have X amount of people a- at the mall, what size sign is it? I I I just need that information on your proposal. What the existing conditions are, what the new conditions are.
Okay, so I don't know if you, did you have that in? Nope, it was not, I didn't have that. So when I went through, again, I couldn't find either permit. I went through seventeen folders three times and I could not find either permit for either sign, but as Jason said, they were permitted, we have that. I do not know.
So so the permit that was pulled back that we can't find was seventeen square feet of sign.
So this one is?
Right.
No, can't be right.
And.
Currently pylon, so currently the pylons a hundred and twenty-eight square feet.
Square feet.
Looking to add seventeen square feet at the bottom of the pylon.
I I, again, just put that in the proposal, existing permit require, it gives you, so when, I'm a builder, I build buildings, I don't do signs. But when I ask for a permit for signs, I I want to, what's the existing conditions? What are the new conditions and what are they going to look like? So what 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 was permitted on the existing conditions? What does the new conditions of your sign look like? And does it conform and make the changes? I have no problem with it, but I just want to know what I'm approving.
Okay, so basically, if you if you look at the application that was put in for this particular sign that we're trying to add, right?
Where is that? Where is the application?
You folks should, I I think, I believe you have it.
It's in the paperwork, we don't have it unless you brought it back. It was in the original file.
Okay, so the the existing pylon there is a hundred and twenty-eight square feet. And right now, we're looking to add seventeen square feet, which is the little bottom of the sign here, the the ninety-six by twenty-six.
I mean, what's, whatever the pulse of the rest of the board is, I'm I'm with you, I just, I just don't understand it.
I would like to see smaller signs, I'd like to see the sign stay the same way it is. And if you've got smaller, you have smaller tenants, you got to do smaller signs. We had Dunkin' Donuts put in front of us, you know how many signs they have? One.
That was historic.
They're all smaller.
That was historic.
This is a huge plaza.
You're comparing Dunkin' Donuts to.
I'm just saying, the signage situation is, you know, it it's, it's a hot issue in town. But that's my comment.
I just feel like you're not giving me enough information for me to say no problem.
I think you're missing part of the application.
Hmm?
I think you're missing part of the application.
Yeah, I I think so too, because the application explains, and and once again, if you want, I'll read it to you. The pylon existing condition is a hundred and twenty-eight square feet. We're looking to add seventeen square feet on the application. And I don't know whether you folks have that or not, but it's 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 part of the, part of the package that you have. So I am answering your question.
But you have two signs there now.
Correct.
All right, are you going to come back and ask for more signage on the little sign? No.
No.
So you'd accept that as?
Doing that.
Yeah, okay, that could be a condition.
Correct.
Okay, and it would just be for this seventeen additional square feet?
That is correct.
On the existing illuminated, isn't this large, excuse me, large pylon sign? So I get that little, where the traffic light is.
Correct.
Correct? I don't have a problem with it, since it's already there. I don't have a problem with it, since it's already there. The big ugly sign is already there. And you're just proposing to put it at the very bottom.
That is correct, yes.
And this bottom part will not be illuminated.
That is correct also.
It's just the top that's being eliminated.
Anyone else have anything else they want to chime in on?
I mean, I don't have a, it is a small addition. I don't have a problem with it, but I legally don't see how we can draft a decision on a variance for a sign like this.
Well, you couldn't on any sign, it doesn't sound like.
Okay, so then the town needs to redo our zoning bylaw.
It's a lot.
I don't know.
See, I have a solution. I have the permit agreement, and I mean, it was dated October 25th, 2023, the application for the sign permit. So there's two pylons there now. Instead of the pylons being duplicates, they could, as they get more other tenants or smaller ones in, they could separate the signs. Some tenants have that instead of double, and the signage is already there. And the topography on the hill, that's the only thing I can see as far as a variance goes. It's nothing's flat, you can't see going up the hill for vehicles to see signage. That's all I have.
Thank you, Kevin.
I really, I hate to reject something like this, but I'm trying to create a way to make it work.
Good place to be. Would you like to continue the hearing?
I think we're just kicking the gate.
What else do you need? Like, I understand what you guys are saying, honestly. Like, if you make these signs any smaller, like, if you go into a plaza or you go somewhere, don't you like to see, like, where you're going or be able to read the pylon? If you're going by it, or if you're sitting at a light, or whatever. I understand what you guys are saying. Honestly, to make them any smaller is absolutely crazy to split them because the tenant isn't going to agree with that and they're not going to like it as well. He's not asking to add to the smaller pylon, which is left as is. He took everything else down there. I mean, to me, honestly, it doesn't look like a cluster. You're just taking two bushes out and adding 17 square feet of signage for four new tenants that could potentially be coming in that won't have signage if they come in.
You're taking the bushes underneath out?
Okay, your picture makes it look like they're going to stay.
Yeah.
Well, they could stay.
That's another consideration that I, I mean.
Landscaping?
Are they small?
What's that?
The bushes.
Oh, yeah, they're small bushes.
So we'll keep them there.
Yeah.
Lane, do we want to ask Jason what his opinion is?
I think his opinion is to grant this. That's what I would guess.
I mean, I'd like to hear from him.
Yeah, Jason.
Would you voice your opinion and then?
I mean, it's commercial business, so that's why I'm very, I mean, if this was a.
I'm with you, and that's.
But I'm just, I'm seeing signs everywhere. I just saw a new one on Main Street that was a temporary sign, and I'm hoping that you'll enforce that. But I'm just, I think we need to enforce our bylaws or change them.
Yeah, no, I agree. The question of the sign bylaw is one that our town planner and myself have talked about recently. Paul Armstrong and I have talked about it. We do intend on trying to get better sign bylaws in place that match more appropriately requests that we see. We also see quite a bit of requests for digital and illuminated signs that we don't have a lot of or any regulation about. So, and to get back to your original question about sentiment in regard to this application, I think myself have been accused a bit too much of being pro-business and helpful to businesses, but that is part of my fundamental kind of position, a development director. I like to see development, I like to see businesses do well. I think it helps the community because it's a revenue stream, especially given the current economy that the town has. But there is a fine balance that the board has to decide because this board has, as we all know, control over what these signs, these unlimited potentially requests can be. And so you do get areas of town that have excessive signage that does not have coordination with the rest of the town. And that, to me, is the biggest issue, is maybe not excessive signage, but nothing that coordinates the sign from one business to the next business. One can be massive, one can be small, one can be lit up, one can be not lit up. And that, that effect does make for an unpleasant experience driving through Kingston in different areas. This particular request is, I think, an economic request for any landlord would want. If you're a tenant and you want to go into a space, you want as much exposure as you can get. If you can't get the exposure at this plaza, you might go someplace else. So that's the only thing I'll say.
Thank you. Well?
I make a motion that we move to approve the application to add 17 square feet of signage to the existing lit pylon number one on the corner of Fifth Avenue and Summer Street. At the very, the additional square footage would be located at the very bottom of the pylon. And the existing landscaping of the bottom of the pylon would be maintained or replaced as a condition of approval.
I'll second it. I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Kevin?
Aye, Kevin.
I'm a no.
I wish that you wouldn't have made that motion yet. But.
They didn't want to kick the can down the road either.
Yeah, I think that the size is small enough. I'll vote aye. I don't want to keep out of business. But I'm, yeah, aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to close the hearing? It's seconded.
I moved to we close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I really feel bad for that woman.